Hello, how are you all?
Wonderful.
This is your introduction for your lady that's doing the announcements. I'm sorry. Mr. Harper, you ready? Good evening. Good evening. All right, welcome to the Griffin Spalding County Schools Board of Education meeting. Today is September 23rd, 2025. Meeting is starting at 6:03 PM. As said, you please place all electronic devices on silent or vibrate. Please place all electronic devices on silent or either vibrate. All right, this time we'll do our roll call. District 1, present. District 2. District 3. District 4. Let the record reflect that Ms. Weldon is absent. She is attending a game with her granddaughter who has a championship game. She's on the volleyball team here at Griffin High School. So our thoughts and prayers to our Griffin High School volleyball team and to Ms. Weldon and her family member that is playing. All right, and District 5. We have a quorum. All right, our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our prayer will be led by Mr. Holmes of the 3rd and our pledge will be led by 2nd grader at Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary, Ms. Nyla Evans. We ask that you stand at this time.
Father God, we just thank you once more again for this opportunity that you have made available for us. We ask Lord God that you bless us, that everything is handled decently and in order. We ask Lord God that you let us make decisions that will be best for all concerned, especially our students. And we thank you in advance for this prayer. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
The United States of America, which stands one nation under God, individuals for justice for all.
Thank you, Nyla. She does? Okay, okay. Next up on the agendas are board norms and protocols. All right, we are focusing on the following words: consistency, accountability, and excellence. Again, we're focusing on the following words: consistency, accountability, and excellence. All right, next up we have our Griffin Spalding County School Spotlight. Y'all, let's give a rounding round of applause to Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary School. School name: Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary School. How many scholars attend your school? 312. What is your school mascot? The bear. How many faculty and staff members work at your school? 53. A quote from the principal on why you love being the proud principal of the school. "I am proud to be the principal of Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary School because every day I see the incredible things that happen when a community comes together for the scholars. Our scholars inspire me with their curiosity, resilience, and determination to grow. Watching them learn, take new risks, and celebrate their successes reminds me why education is so powerful. I am equally proud of our staff who pour into the hearts and talents into making sure that every student feels valued. Their commitment to high expectations, creative teaching, and building strong relationships create a school culture where students can truly thrive. What makes Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary School special is also the support and involvement of our families and community. Together, we are partners in shaping not just strong learners but kind, responsible, and confident young people. Being principal at Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary is more than a role. It is a privilege. I love leading a school where collaboration, achievement, and positivity are at the core of everything that we do. It fills me with pride to see our shared vision come to life each day in classrooms, hallways, and beyond. As Principal Jackson says every morning, 'It's going to be a productive day at ATK because the teachers are effective and the students are brilliant.'" Y'all, let's give it up for Principal Jackson. This is not in the script, but she is in her first year as principal at Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary School, and she is doing an amazing job. What good things are going on at the school socially and educationally? Many great things are happening at Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary School. The teachers and staff consistently set and hold students to high expectations, giving them the gift of meaningful, challenging learning experiences every single day. They push students to think critically, engage deeply, and believe in their own potential. And their efforts are making a lasting impact. Their dedication, belief in scholars, and commitment to student success continue to help Atkinson students achieve the highest levels, at the highest levels. Our instructional coaches lead effective collaborative planning sessions where grade level teams can analyze student work, form acceleration, and remediation groups, plan using the instructional frameworks, and ensure alignment with standards, learning targets, classroom activities, and assessments. Teachers and staff's hard work is evident in student data. We are seeing promising student data and growth in I-Ready, common formative assessments, unit assessments, and student work that is completed each day. Every week, we shout out staff members for great things that they've accomplished in our ATK newsletter. We celebrate the I-Ready class and teacher of the week who has the highest passing percentage in reading and math I-Ready. We celebrate our students of the month by having a bear run and a certificate ceremony that showcases the students who have followed our Atkinson expectations. We celebrate classes with high mastery percentages and assessments and attendance. Students who score 100% on accelerated reading quizzes have incentives throughout our media center. We recognize our employee of the month with flowers, gifts, and a shout-out in our ATK newsletter and social media platforms. Staff birthdays are celebrated at our monthly staff meetings. Our partners and Sunshine Committee help make this possible. As principal, I love to celebrate hard work and growth, big or small. We believe that it all comes together for the good of ATK. Tutoring services for reading are provided in the school first through students through Read United. Extended learning will begin in October to help close the gaps in reading and math from K-5 grade students. Mentoring groups are currently forming and will provide social emotional support. The Bloom Express truck and our ATK storehouse are available to families in need of clothing, toiletry items, supplies, and snacks. We are excited to start our student book club, chess club, Young Ladies of Elegance Club, and our Gentlemen's Mentoring Club. Y'all, let's give it up for those over there at ATK. At Suzie B. Atkinson, we value our partnerships. The community has truly showed up and showed out for the staff and the students at ATK. We are thrilled and grateful for our partners, whose support and actions show us just how much our community stands with us. The mission is possible. At ATK, we are all in. What is the school doing to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity among scholars, families, and staff? At Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary School, we are committed to making sure that every student, family, and staff members feel valued and included. We celebrate different cultures and perspectives, provide resources and support so every scholar can succeed and create a safe, respectful, and positive environment where all voices are heard. Together, we are building a community where diversity is celebrated and equity is at the heart of what we do. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, let's give it up one more time for Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary School, our September School Spotlight. At this time, if there are any teachers, administrators, and our lovely scholar and our parent, Leila and her mom, if you would join us at the step and repeat, we'll take a picture. Atkinson is located in the omnipotent 1st district, so I'll present the certificate. All right, now we'll move on to item... Next item is our Griffin Spalding County School System announcements. Mr. Zachary Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It gives me a great pleasure to introduce my assistant for tonight, who will present our announcement. She is none other than Anna Foster. She's a senior at Spalding High School. She is a member of the Superintendent's Advisory Council, a former member of the School Board's Gifted Advisory Council, Spalding High Varsity Tennis Captain, Beta Club President, Senior Class President, Junior Gal President, Science National Honor Society President, Founder and President of Jags United Club... Man, I'm getting tired of reading this boy. Host Secretary. She's also Engage Club Secretary. Her college major of choice is Biology/Biomedical Science. Her first college choice is UGA Go Dawgs. Her second college choice, she has two, UNC Chapel Hill and University of Virginia Vanderbilt. Other highlights, she's an AP Scholar with Distinction, attendee of the Georgia Governors' Honors Program over the summer. I present the some and introduce the others, Anna Foster.
Chairman Brown, Members of the Board, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Warren. My name is Anna Foster, and I am a senior at Spalding High School. I would like to thank the Board of Education for involving scholars of the district in the policy and legislative process. The announcements for the September 23rd, 2025 Board of Education meeting are as follows. There will be a called Board of Education meeting on September 30th, 2025, at 5:00 PM here in the boardroom at 216 South 6th Street. The GSCS 5K and Fall Bazaar will be held this Saturday, September 27th, 2025. The 5K begins at 8:00 AM at Poplar Street across from Memorial Stadium, and the vendors and booths will remain until noon. Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, there will be a Griffin Spalding County Board of Education Work Session at 4:00 PM here in the boardroom at 216 South 6th Street. The Griffin Spalding County Schools Fall Break will be October 13th through October 17th, 2025. The next Board of Education meeting will be held here in the boardroom at 216 South 6th Street, Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Governance Team, Cabinet Members, and Stakeholders, this concludes the Board of Education announcements for September 23rd, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you for a fine job, Anna. Mr. Brown, that concludes the announcement for tonight.
All right, thank you so much. All right, this time we are going to move on to the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the adoption of the agenda? Been properly moved to approve by Ms. McDonough the 5th. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Register of the Second. Is there any discussion here? None? All those in favor, vote by raising your right hand. Or zero, the agenda is adopted. Now, we're going to move on to recognitions by Ms. Sue McDonough, our Vice Chair, representing District 5.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good evening, everyone. This is always a fun part of the events of the evening when we can recognize so many people in our district. First, we have Mr. Adam Pugh, the Georgia Reads Proclamation.
All right, thank you, Board Members and Attendees. So yesterday was Georgia Reads Day for the state of Georgia. I'd like to read Governor Brian Kemp's proclamation, and then I'll explain to you what we did to celebrate this day. But Georgia Reads Day. Literacy is not only... Whereas literacy is not only an education issue but also a critical driver of Georgia's economic growth, workforce readiness, and the health and well-being of its citizens. And whereas, as of 2024, 63% of Georgia's rising 4th grade students were not reading proficiently according to the National Assessment of Educational Progress. And research consistently shows that students who read proficiently by the end of the 3rd grade are four times more likely to graduate from high school. And whereas, the Georgia Council on Literacy established in 2023 by the Georgia General Assembly and supported by the governor, works in collaboration with education leaders to advance comprehensive reforms to strengthen reading instruction across the state, grounded in the science of reading and aligned with evidence-based practices. And whereas, Georgia Reads is a statewide initiative led by the Georgia Council on Literacy with partners including the Georgia Municipal Association, Georgia Forward, Members of the General Assembly, and former football champion and children's author Malcolm Mitchell, who serves as the official Georgia Reads coach. And whereas, on Georgia Reads Day, the state of Georgia will begin a statewide search for 10 Georgia Reads communities to be celebrated in 2026 that have demonstrated measurable success in improving literacy through effective local partnerships by working together. Georgians can secure a brighter economic and educational future, one reader at a time. And this is a proclamation again by Governor Brian Kemp. It's also backed by our local leadership, Mayor Doug Holberg, and the Georgia Municipal Association. And so our ELA leaders read with students for Georgia Reads Day. We're preparing to have a ribbon cutting. We've got a new book vending machine as part of our RISE initiative, which is all centered around literacy, which is a building block of education. And so we've got a new book vending machine that'll be at the community center at Fairmont. It's just part of an effort to get books into the community and get students reading in school, at home, and everywhere. So thank you for allowing me to share this proclamation from the governor.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. That's awesome. Next, we have Ms. Lindy Pruitt with the 2024-2025 Innovative Technology Award by First Readers, F-E-R-S-T.
Good evening, everyone. We are excited to announce that the Griffin Spalding County School System has been awarded the 2425 Innovative Technology Award by First Readers, a national organization dedicated to advancing early literacy across the country. A photo booth link was established district-wide, allowing schools to capture and share their reading moments in real time. This honor celebrates our district's creative use of technology to foster a love of reading and learning among our students. This marks the second consecutive year First Readers has recognized our district's excellence. In 2324, Griffin Spalding proudly received the School District of the Year Award, a testament to our ongoing commitment to literacy and innovation. Now, in 2425, school year has marked our fourth year of participation in Read for the Record, a nationwide campaign that unites communities to celebrate reading and promote early literacy. This milestone was made possible through the visionary leadership of Sonia Fields, speech-language pathologist at Cowan Road Middle School, and the resourceful, action-oriented leadership of Julie Evans, media specialist at Cowan Road Middle School. Julie's ability to leverage community connections, apply her technology expertise, and coordinate school-wide efforts ensures the success of Read for the Record year after year. Together, their dedication to student engagement and commitment to literacy innovation continue to inspire and elevate our entire district. These back-to-back honors reflect the passion, collaboration, and forward-thinking spirit of our educators and staff. We are deeply grateful to First Readers for this recognition and proud to be part of a movement that empowers children through the joy of reading. Let's recognize tonight Ms. Sonia Fields and Ms. Julie Evans from Cowan Road Middle School. Okay. Sue P. Right. Just so that everyone knows, we also are starting up October 13th of this year, a new campaign to kick off the beloved classic, The Little Engine That Could. Each week, we'll spotlight a different title from the program's rich year history, creating a vibrant journey through stories that have inspired millions. These festivities will culminate on the Read for the Record International Day of Reading, which will be held on February 26th. And it will start with the book, See Marcus Grow. And if you're interested, we want you to be sure and reach out to either Julie or Ms. Fields at Cowan Road Middle School, and they can help you get involved in this for your school.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Pruitt. Thank you so much, Ms. Fields and Ms. Evans. That's great work. Reading is so important. Thank you so much. Next, we have Griffin Spalding Alumni Committee. Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Ms. McDonough. Before I make this presentation, I want to ask all the members of the Alumni Reunion Planning Committee to come forward to the podium over here to my right. Y'all must still be tired like me. They wore me out. First, I want to say it gives me honor and a privilege to present this, and I want to thank Chairman Brown for contacting me and making this happen. Thank you, sir. What I want to present, because this is a special group of people that made something happen in Griffin that was historical. I think the word that most young people use is, "It was epic." And so here we go. Griffin Spalding Alumni Committee, in recognition of your outstanding dedication and commitment to promoting peace and unity in our community. Through your recent alumni cookout, you have fostered togetherness, strengthened relationships, and inspired a spirit of collaboration that reflects the very best of Griffin Spalding. We extend our heartfelt appreciation for your service and the positive impact you have made, presented on this 23rd day of September 2025. Let's give them a hand. Before we move to take a picture, I would like for each of you to introduce yourselves, and then we'll move over and take a picture in front of the step. Go ahead.
Well, I'm Joe Ward Jr., and I was becoming the president of the group.
My name is Erica Starks, and I'm one of the presidents of the group.
Wanda Lockett, Treasurer.
Xena Watkins, Treasurer. And our main other president, she's not here tonight. Her name is Tisa Payne. And we have another Treasurer, Juanetris Morris.
And Ms. Payne, she's out of the country. I seen her vacationing. And so she getting it in for everybody. But I want the listeners to understand, I want you to really understand, because I was there. And I'm from the old school, Ms. Pruitt and some of us natives, like Mr. Ballard. The crowd that they had at the City Park, I haven't seen since we had 4th of July celebrations at the City Park. There were over 2,000 people at the Griffin City Park, and it consisted of the class of 1979, who was the funkiest class there? My class, my class. From 1979 to 2021 to 2021, Griffin and Spalding High graduate alumni. So they pulled off something that no one thought that they could do. So I wanted to make sure everybody recognized what they did. Y'all, come on.
You know, I saw all the pictures on Facebook, and I thought to myself, "There's a ton of people at City Park. Now I know why." Wow, that's so awesome. Thank you all for being here and congratulations. Thank you all for being here, and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Brown, that concludes our recognitions.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next up on our agenda, let me go back. Ms. Reed, do you have anybody signed up for public comments? All right, here none, all right. We are going to take a two-minute break to allow our guests to leave, and we'll come back and take care of the business of the district. Yeah, on the phone. Uh-oh. All right, we are back from allowing our guests to leave. At this time, we will take up the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda for this agenda item?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth. Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Ms. Register of the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Raise your right hand. Four, zero, this item is approved. All right, moving up to our action items. Policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use, second reading, Mr. Lonnie Harper.
Good afternoon, board members, Chairman Brown. The district is presenting policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use for second reading. This was, again, it was updated based on Senate Bill 351, and at this time, it is recommended that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approve policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use for Second Reading, and final board adoption.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the report from Mr. Harper. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to policy IFBG?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth. Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Ms. Register of the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Four, zero, item is approved.
Thank you.
Next up, Dr. Christopher Ridley, policy JCDAF, Student Use of Electronic Devices, second read.
All right, good evening, board members, Board Chair, Dr. Warren. Policy JCDAF is up for first read, that is students' use of electronic devices. It's up for second read, I'm sorry. It's based on House Bill 340. It is recommended that the BOE approves policy JCDAF, Use of Electronic Devices by Students.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've heard the presentation from Dr. Christopher Ridley. Are there any questions? All right, Ms. McDonald, you're recognized for questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Hey, Dr. Ridley. I just don't really, it's kind of a question, comment, really. I know when the UVA principals were here recently, I asked, I can remember asking Ms. Douglas how it's going in the high school arena. How are we doing with this? What's the vibe? Is the vibe still very positive? Is things going well?
Yeah, vibe is still positive. Things are going well. Of course, you know, we're not in the high school, we're not in the middle school, as far as, you know, when students have to put their phones up, I think they've been good about not having them out during instructional time, which is good, that is the policy. They still are allowed to bring their phones to school, but they just don't have them out.
Okay, but overall, you think that's going very well this year?
I think it is. We have not had any complaints as far as on a major level. The schools have been doing a real great job of just dealing with any little incidents that they have come.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
No. No one has passed out yet.
All right, there are hearing none. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to policy JCDAF?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth. Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Ms. Register of the second. No discussion, all in favor, vote by raising your right hand. Four, zero, policy is approved. Next up, Dr. Kimberly Shepherd, Fiscal Year 26, Federal and State Grants Approval.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Warren. This is seeking the approval of the board for the following federal and state grants that have been submitted and approved by the Georgia Department of Education. Each year, CTA grants are available for application. The following have been submitted and approved for the Georgia DOE for the FY26 school year. These grants are all supporting the CTA programs, teachers, and students to provide workforce education to prepare our students to be college and career-ready. So, we have our federal Perkins Five Funds. We also have... We also have our state grants that we have as well for extended day, for apprenticeships, supervision, and then again, our ag extended day and ag extended year. And the interim superintendent recommends the approval of the federal and state grants that have been submitted to and approved by the Georgia Department of Education.
Ladies and gentlemen, we heard the report for Dr. Kimberly Shepherd. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns at this time? Ms. McDonald, you're recognized.
Dr. Shepherd, hey, it's nice to see you.
Hi.
I really value the work that you do, I truly do. Is this, as far as total numbers, 177 plus, so we're talking like 200 and almost $300,000, 280, is this pretty much in line with what we normally get year to year?
It is a little less than last year, and actually, in the last two years, we had increased, and then last, this year, we're decreasing a little bit. But that is, when I reached out to the state, they said that everybody across the board was decreasing slightly, so.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
No problem at all. All right, ladies and gentlemen, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the passage of FY26 federal and state grants approval from Dr. Kimberly Shepherd?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth. Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Ms. Register of the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by raising your right hand. Item is approved. Thank you so much. Next up, Intellodge, Dr. Stephanie Evans. Hi, Dr. Evans, how are you?
Dr. Evans was my freshman English teacher at Griffin High School.
Yes, indeed. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Dr. Warren, and board members. Tonight, I bring before you an action memo for the renewal of the Intellodge Incorporated contract. The Human Resources Department would like to renew the services with Intellodge to address the teacher staffing needs for the 2526 school year. The district pays $9,500 for the cost of benefits, which is a $13,120 cost savings to the district. It is recommended that the board approve the partnership renewal to staff hard to fill positions with teachers using Intellodge for the 2526 school year with payment not to exceed $450,000.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've heard the report from Dr. Stephanie Evans. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? All righty, here none. What's the pleasure of this body as it relates to this particular item?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth. Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Ms. Register of the second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Four, zero, thank you so much. Item is approved. Bus surplus, Mr. Patrick Martin.
Good evening, Board Chair Brown, board members, Dr. Warren. This evening, coming before you to... Coming before this evening in recommendation for that the GSCS Board of Education approve surplus of seven late-model vehicles. The GSCS Transportation Department replaces replacement cycle targets certain buses or vehicles for surplus purposes. These are vehicles that, due to condition, require high levels of...
I just want to ask a question, because I was exposed to riding on a electric school bus. And I was wondering, has that been something, and I realize, you know, the charge time, and the gentleman was telling me that they use it for the smaller grades, you know, shorter routes or time, and I was just wondering, was there any interest? Have you looked into that?
Yes, we have looked preliminary at electric buses. However, infrastructure will be quite consuming. Secondly, our, most of our routes, we have a lot of rural areas. We don't have a lot of areas to really set up those charging grids outside of the immediate area here.
Okay, that was something that he mentioned, but he was just saying, you mentioned the maintenance and everything on him, and he was talking about the big advantage of not having to do a lot of the regular maintenance. But I do understand about the charging stations, which is, we're not developed in that area yet, so.
I hear.
But I was just wanting to know if that was something that we...
That is something that I have considered. We launched 25, 27 buses when I was, my last stop, APS. We did, but the biggest thing, the drawback was, A, the technology for servicing the vehicles wasn't to that level as far as maintaining the battery operating life, as was that grid pattern for recycling those.
Okay, thanks, sir.
All right, any other questions or concerns? All right, here none. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this item on the agenda?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth. Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Ms. Register of the second. No discussion, all those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Four, zero, item is approved. Next up, bus purchase, Mr. Patrick Martin.
It is recommended that GSCS Board Education approve the purchase of one new school bus from Yancey Bus Sales at a total cost of $166,900. A little background, the GSCS Transportation Department funds its bus replacement programs with money allocated from bus purchases and splosh. The base buses are selected from the state bid, with additional options added to meet the specs from the Department of GSCS. Except this time, it is recommended that the GSCS Board Education approve the purchase of one new school bus from Yancey Bus Sales at a total cost of $166,900.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've heard the report from Mr. Patrick Martin. Are there any questions, comments, concerns at this time? Mr. Holmes, you're recognized.
I meant to ask this question in the surplus section, but I wanted to know, do you have anyone on staff that could do like minor body repairs, paint, stuff like that?
Yes, minor issues, yes, sir.
Yeah, minor, okay, all right.
All right, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the bus surplus, I mean, bus purchase item?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth. Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Ms. Register of the second. No discussion, all those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Four, zero.
Thank you.
I'm going to pass it over to Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The next stage of the meeting will be our presentations and discussions. We have Ms. Judy Battle, policy G A E B.
Good evening, board members and interim superintendent, Dr. Donald Warren. The Human Resources Department is presenting policy G A E B, Sexual Harassment of Employees for First Reading. The district will post policy G A E B, Sexual Harassment of Employees, on Assembly to receive input from board members and stakeholders for 30 days, after which, the policy will be brought to the subsequent business meeting for second reading and final board adoption.
All right, board, are there any questions or comments? All right, Ms. Battle, I have a question. In fact, I've made myself some notes on this presentation, the next presentation, employee leaves and absences, and the third one with regard, teacher evaluation appeals. Is there any way that we, as an organization, can let our employees know? I think it's important that our employees read this, because I think for the people that are in the trenches every day, to go over this, is there any way we can appeal for our employees to read this and maybe provide feedback to us prior to us voting on these policies? Does that make, am I making any sense? You know, not everyone has an opportunity to watch our meetings, either in live, real-time and/or later on. But I think it's important that our employees know that we're trying to update these policies. So, what can we do as an organization to ask them to read and give us feedback?
That's a good question. We can actually include this in our weekly communicator that goes out to all employees and embed the link to Assembly, where they can go in and voice those requests or questions about the policy.
Because I think it would be, I just think it would be great that we include them in any way, any means that we have available to us. Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Battle.
Okay, do you want me to read the...
Yes, and Ms. Battle is next with the policy G A R H.
Yes. The Human Resources Department is presenting policy G A R H, Employee Leaves and Absences for First Reading. The district will post policy G A R H, Employee Leaves and Absences on Assembly to receive input from board members and stakeholders for 30 days, after which, the policy will be brought to the subsequent business meeting for second reading and final board adoption.
Board members, any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Ms. Battle. And then the third policy for Ms. Battle would be policy G B I A.
Correct. Human Resources is presenting board policy G B I A, Teacher Evaluation Appeals for First Reading. The district will post G B I A, Teacher Evaluation Appeals on Assembly to receive input from board members and stakeholders for 30 days, after which, the policy will be brought back to the subsequent business meeting for second reading and final board adoption.
Board members, are there any discussion, questions, comments? All right, just want to be sure, Ms. Battle, that we understand that I have asked that our employees be able to see policy G A E B, G A R H, and G B I A for their feedback prior to us vote, our vote.
Correct, and we'll work with Mr. Pugh to get that included in the weekly communicator, along with the link for Assembly, where they can go in and input their feedback.
Very good. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next we have policy I B B. Ms. Dr. Ridley.
Hello, I'm standing here for Mrs. Tracy Sims tonight. Teacher and Leader Effectiveness is presenting board policy I B B, Charter Schools for First Reading. The board and district are collaboratively reviewing and updating our board policies. The policy has been updated to align with newly approved legislation. Next steps, the district will post board policy I B B, Charter Schools on assembly to receive input from board members and stakeholders for 30 days, after which the policy will be brought to the subsequent business meeting for second reading and final board adoption.
Board members, you've heard Dr. Ridley, any questions or comments about policy I B B? All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ridley. Next we have Mr. Stikes, policy I D F A.
Thank you, Vice Chairman McDonald. Members of Board Education, Dr. Warren today, I'm presenting board policy I D F A, Equity in Sports for First Reading. This policy has been updated with the most recent verbiage from the Equal Educational Opportunities Equity in Sports Act and Fair and Safe Athletic Opportunities Act, most recently passed by the state legislature. The district will post board policy I D F A, Sports Equity in Sports on assembly and receive input from board members and stakeholders for 30 days, after which the policy will be brought back to your subsequent business meeting for second reading and consideration and final board adoption.
All right, Board members, questions or comments concerning policy I D F A?
Ms. McDonald, if I would, it doesn't have anything to do with the policy, but I wasn't here at the last board meeting, and I just want to thank Mr. Stikes and Dr. Moore for the presentation. I got a copy of the presentation slide from Mrs. Ray, and I want to thank you all for the work that you did to put that together to present to the board member because after our conversation, we realized that's something that needed to be addressed, so I wanted to thank you for doing that.
Absolutely, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Thank you, Mr. Stikes. Next we have Dr. Blessing Game. I guess we have, yeah, he's here, thank you. Policy J R, Student Records.
Thank you, Vice Chair McDonald, Board members, Dr. Warren. The Department of Evaluation Accountability is presenting policy J R, Student Records for First Reading. A minor revision has been made to the policy, adding an additional sentence outlining rights of eligible parents and students to review student records. The next step is for the policy to be posted on assembly for 30 days to receive input from board members and stakeholders, after which at a subsequent board meeting, the policy will come back for second reading and proposed adoption.
Thank you, Dr. Blessing Game. Board members, any questions or comments? All right, thank you very much for the information, Dr. Blessing Game. Thank you. All right, next we have the iReady Fall 2025 Presentation, Ms. Phillips. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I guess I should say good evening.
Yes, that's better, that's better. Good evening, distinguished Board members and Dr. Warren. My name is Dasha Phillips, I'm the district's MTSS coordinator, and I am here to share our beginning of the year data from iReady with you all. Normally, we will have one of our iReady partners here to present this information, so I get the joy of doing that today, the honor along with Dr. Greer, so we're going to just share what we have for you. We want you guys to just realize and focus that this is the beginning of the year data for iReady and where our students are right now and where they're ready to learn. Some goals and priorities that we have been working with with iReady is to increase student growth and performance across all instructional tiers. That has been our main focus for this year as we go into work with this group. We're going to start by looking at our fall over-year data. And just to level set, when you start looking at this data, I want you guys to think about all the greens. Dark green means that students have met or surpassed in particular areas or domains. Early on green, they're almost there, they're close to meeting partial expectations. Yellow means that they are ready to learn. That's the sweet spot for them. That's that targeted, targeted amount of support that they'll need to be successful in this year. And then when you see the red and then the darker red, those are our students who need some additional supports, and we'll continue to serve those students through tier two and tier three MTSS. All righty, so again, just to kind of level set that, students in green and yellow are where they need to be for support. And if you look at this data that they've shared with us already, you can see in reading, 61% of our kindergarten through eighth grade students in the Griffin Spawning County School System are ready to learn. They are ready to learn in reading. Looking at the math data, looking at 25-26, we have 59% of our students ready to learn in math, grades K through A. And if you're looking at that data trend over year, over year, each year at the beginning of the year, our students are growing, they're starting stronger, and they're more prepared each year to learn. So now, we'll have an opportunity of just looking at how our students have fared from year over year again, but we're going to look mainly at your 25-26 school year. So again, this lets us know where our students are, where we're ready to start instruction, where that support is ready for them, and I'm so proud to let you guys know that in reading, we have 100% of our kindergartners ready to learn. Yes, we're very, very happy about that. 92% of our first graders are ready, 62% of our second graders, 56% of our third graders, 62% of our fourth graders, and 43% of our fifth graders are ready to learn in reading right now. Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You know, as I was looking over this report, I always look between second and third, and we're in great shape till the dark red, third, fourth, and fifth. That seems to be a trend.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know why that happens?
We know that K through two, we're working on those reading foundational skills for students, and so we're using Orton-Gillingham, we're doing small group instruction, we're focusing on all those instructional components for early literacy. And then when we get to third grade, we know that our students, they're tested that year, they're getting ready, you know, and it's, I guess, kind of moving from learning how to read to, you know, reading to learn. And so what we are figuring out is that we need to make some adjustments. And, you know, we've been partnering with schools, with principals, our departments, just everybody to help facilitate that need right there. But you're absolutely right, we noticed it there between second and third grade, and we also noticed it in middle school as well. So we are aware of what that data is showing us, and we are very diligent about what we need to do to help close those gaps for students.
Yes, because, I mean, Ms. Pruitt even mentioned that in her presentation, you know, the four, with regard to third graders being able to read on level, and I've said that a lot through the years, and we've just, I don't know whether that means different teachers need to be in that third grade classroom, more experienced teachers in those third grade classes? I don't know what the answer is, I'm just trying to think out loud because it's critical.
I agree, it is very critical, and I think, you know, as a district, we're all just trying to figure it out.
Right.
And support teachers with professional learning, support students as much as we can, and, you know, having our families, our parents partner with us as well.
Absolutely, and I want everyone in this room to know, and on TV, that I'm not placing blame on anyone. It's not about blame, it's about fixing the issue because it's pretty rampant in our system that we fly high until our kids get in third grade. So there's got to be, like you said, there's a disconnect somewhere with regard to that, and I know you guys are looking at it, I just, it's just got to be fixed.
Yep, and I'm sure, just thinking about it and how we approach it every single day, we recognize it, and everybody, it's all hands on deck.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to make sure that our students are learning at every grade level.
Absolutely.
But we are paying attention to those grades.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate that very much, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we'll go ahead and look over to our middle school, and this is just middle school, middle grades, kind of those same concerns that we noticed third, fourth, and fifth. With that being said, though, we do have about 50% of our fifth, our sixth graders ready to learn in reading, and we're going to take that. We have 46% of our seventh graders ready to learn and 41% of our eighth graders ready to learn. We do notice that each year, if you look, it is some improvement from year to year, from 23, 24, 24, 25, 25, 26, we are showing some growth. We do have some areas that we have to continue working on intentionally, but we know that our students are learning and are growing. All right, so now we'll just take a look at that math for everybody. Again, our kindergartners, 100% of them are ready, they're ready to learn in math. 79% of our first graders are ready to learn. 53% of our second graders are ready to learn. 49% of our third graders are ready to learn. 51% of our fourth graders and 51% of our fifth graders are ready to learn in math. So majority of our K through five students, they're ready. They are ready to go. So we're in a very sweet spot for instruction and support for them. When we look over at our middle grades in math, six through eight, we have 51% of our students ready, 40% of our seventh graders, and 44% of our eighth graders. Some of those same concerns in reading, but we're in the trenches doing that work. All right, so now, we'll just kind of look at some benchmark comparisons, looking at our students. We are the district, looking at students in Georgia, it's over 100 districts that participate in iReady support, and then nationally. And nationally, we're looking at different states from California, New York, Virginia, we're also looking at Nevada. So a lot of those different districts from different states throughout, okay? So I want you guys to just kind of look at that so you can see where we are comparative to our state folks and the end of the nation. So if you can tell, we are scoring very, very similarly to our partners, our peers in Georgia, as well as our peers in the nation. So we're not far off at all, y'all. Our students are doing really well, and all of these results are coming from every district that took the beginning of the year from now until September 10th. Okay, so this is how we fare with everybody who's taking iReady at the beginning of the year. Now, as you're looking, they have it through K through two here. Again, look at us with our district, our kindergartners, they're outdoing everybody, state and nationally, all right? Looking at our first graders, the same thing. Okay? And then when we get to second grade, we're still close, you know, we're comparative. Still a little bit close there, but we do have a little work to do. Moving into third, fourth, and fifth, we have some ups and downs there, but we know that work that we have to do in these grade levels. Just like you mentioned earlier, Ms. McDonald, that information at third, fourth, and fifth, we see it coming through right here. All right, six, seven, and eight. All over, we're comparative to the state districts and to districts nationally. So we have our areas that we really need to focus on, and we know where we're going, and we know what to do to serve these students. Here's our math placement. Yet again, we're similar. We're not too far off from everybody else, so we're in a very good place. Yet again, our kindergartners in math, they're taking over. Our first graders are doing really well, and in this group with math, our second graders start to, you know, show just a small little lapse there, but we're going to keep working. Third, fourth, and fifth, the same thing. We're working alongside our peers, we're moving almost like everybody else, we're very similar. Georgia, the whole state of Georgia, over 100 districts.
Okay.
Yes, this is from 100, over 100 districts, and then several states nationally.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And then this is where we are with the middle grades. All right, so this year, it was our first year using iReady as a universal screener, and we use this to support House Bill 307, which is the reading and dyslexia screener for the state of Georgia in grades three through, I'm sorry, K through three. And as a result of this first screener, this is where we landed with our students, and we'll take this diagnostic, this assessment, three times a year as well, okay? So when we started looking at the data, we noticed that we have 40% of our students in K through three who are showing no observed risk for reading deficits or characteristics of dyslexia, and we were very proud of that. We have 35% of our students who are showing some risk for reading difficulties and characteristics of dyslexia, and at last, we have 24% of our students who are showing at-risk for those reading deficits and characteristics of dyslexia. But we are moving forward. We're being very proactive with providing Orton-Gillingham support, focusing on interventions, tier one, tier two, tier three. We're making sure that our students have the opportunity to practice reading, we're honing in on the science of learning, we're making sure that our teachers are getting their training, the effective training they need to make sure that our students are learning like they need to. And then we're partnering with iReady and other companies just to make sure that we're getting what we need for our students. So we're being very proactive with this. For the last few years, we knew it was coming, and we just started working on it to make sure that our students would, you know, would do well, and our focus was making sure that we're preventive, okay? And then we have a little demographic data. All right, so when we look at our first two groups, we're going to look at our DES students. According to the beginning of the year data, we have 32% of them ready to learn. Our babies ready to learn in reading. And with our ELL students, we have 38% of them ready to learn in reading, and that's really great. We're really proud of that number of students who are ready to learn there. When we look over at math, we have 31% of our DES students ready to learn. And 41% of our ELL students ready to learn. iReady has shared this differentiated growth measures within iReady with you all today. It's important that when a student is working on iReady for 45 minutes a day in reading, I'm sorry, 45 minutes a week in reading and math, they're working on gaining their typical growth. That's the amount of growth that a student should grow within one year. They also talk with us about the importance of reaching stretch growth, and stretch growth is having students working on their personalized learning plan, and then also using the instructional components to close those gaps even faster. So it is our goal to try to get more students to reach their stretch growth. iReady has come up with some statistics right here with some numbers. If we focus on these students, like this first number, we have 217 kindergarten students who are placed right here mid and on grade level, they're ready to run, they're ready to learn, their typical growth is in place, they are excellent. But if we get to that stretch growth, we're going to be able to have 428 of those students reach that goal. So they have provided this metric for us for reading, for each one of those grade levels, so we can go from 1,500 students to 2,400 students in reading, and from 1,200 to 2,000 students in math. That's all I have to share with you all. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I'll start. You know, as a former educator myself, and student-led conferences, and do we have our students... You know, as a former educator myself and student-led conferences and, and do we have our students setting goals for themselves? I, I think that's, number one, that's a life skill that they need to be taught early on. Do we do that at this level to, uh, you know, I was just thinking back to this page where you talked about the stretch. Does every, can every child see, can every child see their own improvement and they know what blue means or, or, or yellow means?
Yes ma'am, they are experts at that.
Okay.
And so, um, if you are going to visit one of the schools, you can ask the students to just to look at their, um, their reports and they'll show you where they are, they'll show you their quiz grades, where, um, area they're in, if they're in red, yellow or in green, they'll show you what their next lessons are, what they've scored, how much time on task. And they also do goal setting, that's a part of what we do every administration with our students. We let them know like this is where you need to be to be proficient, this is where you were last time, where are you going to get to? How can we get you to that next point?
But they, but, but they do set their own goals, I mean, with regard to that, Dr. Warren?
They do.
If you were, uh, for my update to you, last week, I shared some photos from, um, Ann Street where Ms. Rojas was in the hallway and for every grade level, they have, um, the kids, um, by dot, they're numbered indicating the beginning of your, um, mark and where they want to be mid, mid-year and end of year.
Okay.
So she does an excellent job of using data to set goals.
Yes, and we see that throughout all the schools, like everybody's definitely starting there.
And I know in the middle school arena, we had, um, I taught science, that's it, science. Do we do that, I know it's, as I recall, early on, my tenure on the board, early on, I do know some elementary schools were able to go to kind of like the departmentalization of a subject. Do we do, how many elementary schools do that here?
Um, I'm not sure the number, but we do have some.
Because you know, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, if we have two great reading teachers in elementary school, I would probably want my child in that classroom, does that make sense?
Ma'am.
And I hope that we're utilizing the skill set, sets that our employees have to help make this come to fruition with regard to reading on level. I, I don't know, I just had that thought sitting here because I know, early on, when I was going around visiting schools and introducing myself, so on and so forth, that some principals were doing that several years ago, so.
Thank you for sharing.
But I think it's great that, uh, children understand how important it is to set goals, uh, that's a life skill that, that never ends.
Yes ma'am.
So I appreciate that a lot and I will, I'm, I'm going to go out to a couple of my schools and I'm going to have those children teach me how to read this, uh.
They will be so proud to do that for you.
I'll, I'll make arrangements to do that, thank you so much.
Great, you're welcome.
Board members, any other questions, uh, Ms. Register?
Thank you for that presentation, I have just a quick question. Um, how do we communicate this information, I guess the child's information to the parents?
So after every diagnostic, um, we send home a batch report for parents, so they get a reading of how their students scored in reading and in math. And it tells the areas that they are, what they scored in, what they need help, what they need improvement in, if they've surpassed a particular domain and it lets them know that.
Um, I only ask because how, have we been doing that every year, is it new this year?
Um, we started using it last year, but for this year, yes, everybody has been given that information.
I, I just, I came home and there was just a report laying on my kitchen counter. And I had to figure out what this was, I was reading and I even said, this is the first time I've seen this and, you know, because middle school children, um, and probably elementary school children, they don't, they're not really good at handing
Sharing that, yes.
Parents' information, so I was wondering if maybe there was a, an additional way we could communicate that. I'm just lucky that it was just laying on my kitchen counter, um, I think that was an accident, actually.
Yes, we do have an opportunity for parents to also, um, log in, um, to iReady and have access to that information. Uh, but it'll just be some, you know, some connections that we'll have to make. But they do have an opportunity to do that, so they can watch what their students are doing and how they're doing as well.
That'd be great, I just know, I hear from a lot of parents that their children don't tell them anything and they don't show them anything and they have to beg for, you know, so, um, that would be good because I know that when I saw the scores, I was, I was like, oh, well, this is great, he's doing great in these areas and it was, um, I just know more parents would probably like to have that information if their child's not giving it to them.
Thank you for that feedback, I'll share that with them.
Thank you, Ms. Register, anyone else, Mr. Holmes?
I got, I got one question, good to see you, Ms. Phillips.
How you doing?
And I see, uh, your cohort back there hiding in the background. But I, I, I got a question, uh, from a discussion we had, don't want to reveal too much, but it, it had to do with a high school student who was way behind in their academic pros, progress. And, uh, I know we do something, but could you remind us, what do we do for students in high school? Uh, who, who, who are not on grade level, uh, or performance level for us, reading and mathematics? What, what do we do for them?
So we do use iReady for students who are in ninth and tenth grade, even though the program is set to go from kindergarten through eighth grade. Um, they have partnered with us to help serve our MTSS tier two, tier three students and our REP students, our remedial education students. And so what they do is, um, they have an opportunity to have an iReady account. Um, they have it in reading or math, whichever area of concern that they have, and then they start working through that process. Once they take the diagnostic, it lets us know how many gaps they have and in those areas that those gaps need to be filled. And then students, they can continue working on their own to improve that. They have teachers at their SWAG and their JAG times that are embedded into their master schedules and they support them instructionally as well. So they do have, you know, not as much opportunities to work in iReady as our elementary and middle school kids, but it is available for them at least two times a week.
So, so, uh, what will we have to do? Uh, I know, I know we can pull a report on everything. Uh, what will we have to do to maybe see how those students or what, what's going on with those students? Is that, is that something we, you can report as well?
Absolutely, yes sir.
Okay, I, I would be interested, I don't know about the other board members. Uh, if we could just add that to whatever you do in the future.
Sure.
To show those students, uh, still involved in iReady and what we're doing with them.
Okay, we'll definitely do that, thank you for your feedback.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have, uh, one other question, Ms. Phillips.
Yes ma'am.
You know, I'm sitting here thinking, at, at the retreat recently and several weeks ago, uh, I mentioned about, we know that all over the state, chronic absenteeism is an issue. I believe last year in the state, it was nineteen point five, almost twenty percent of our students are chronically absent. I believe we were at seventeen something here in this district, can't really remember, don't have that in front of me at the moment. How much? Twenty-six point eight, so I'm sitting here thinking, I wonder how many of the dark red on page thirty-one or, or any of these pages, the dark red are chronically absent students.
I would wonder that as well.
And I would, well, we, they've already proven to us through Dr. Blasingame's ability to do what he does so eloquently and others that, that put that report together at the retreat. Um, it was proven without a doubt that absenteeism had a great, chronic absenteeism had a great effect on our Georgia milestones.
Absolutely.
And I would bet a dollar that chronic absenteeism has a big effect on what you have presented to us tonight. So I don't know if we can extract a report from iReady with regard to student A that's at that forty-two percent in the sixth grade, that's a dark red, which is three plus grade levels below, but I think it would be very interesting.
Okay, I'll request that report for you.
Because we've got to start thinking outside the box with regard to how to get kids to school and I'm still, I still cannot believe we only transport fifty-nine percent of our children to our schools. I was shocked beyond measure. And the state average is only fifty-one, that was even more shocking, so. Anyway, I'll get off my soapbox, appreciate you being here, thank you for the work that you do for us.
Oh, you're so welcome, thank you guys so much.
Yes ma'am. And last but not least, moneybags, Mr. Byron Jones.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Good evening, board members, uh, this is our second financial report for the fiscal year twenty-six, so, uh, bottom left, we've got about thirty-six point five million in fund balance, uh, that's going to continue to trend downward right now till we get tax receipts coming in, hopefully in November, December. Over to the right, yellow, bottom yellow, three point three million fund balance for nutrition. Uh, general operating statement for our, for our general fund, about six point eight million in revenue, ten point four million in expense. So again, it's ordinary that we will run, um, to the negative a little bit this time of year. So we are at this point about five point nine million, uh, in negative. Uh, state, uh, grants and federal grants, you'll notice at the top yellow, we really are only getting anything right now for pre-K. That's because we're waiting on our Department of Education grants to be approved. Uh, and that's standard for pre-K that they, they send that out based on enrollment counts, et cetera. Obviously, we're spending at the bottom, we'll catch those draws in once those budgets are formally approved. From the nutrition department, about a million dollars in revenue so far, on about nine hundred and fifty thousand in spending. So about forty-four thousand to the good in the current year, again, on top of the three point three million dollar reserve that I just shared with you. The management of investments are still coming in at about four point three percent overall, about a hundred and seven point five million. Again, most of that is, is, uh, higher invested general funds and our bond funds that we're still drawing down when those invoices come in. And then year number two of East Plus Seven is really one point three million is the highest receipt we've had so far in our thirteen months. So about, almost sixteen million so far collected in East Plus Funds. Madam Chair, that, that Vice Chair, that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, questions or comments from the board?
Could I, could I say one thing?
Yes sir.
Madam Vice Chair, uh, M- M- Mr. Jones, and, and you know, when we do these reports, uh, the average citizen really don't, uh, know exactly, uh, the details of what, how the school system operate. And, and my point for bringing this up is, when some people see, some people have looked at our fund balance and, and, uh, they made the statements that the school system, uh, won't miss any rollback or anything that we've done previously, but they don't realize that we, we use eleven point five million dollars uh, recently to balance our budget. And, and that fund balance, uh, is not for us to use, it wasn't intended, I'd say, to use in that way to have to keep dipping into it. It was mainly for emergency to keep us from closing schools, laying off employees and things of that nature, but I, I wanted to make that, make that statement. Uh, and if you want to elaborate on the purpose of a fund balance, uh, I, 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 I will open the door for you to do that for the benefit of those who don't understand what a fund balance is.
Right, so, uh, best practice is about fifteen percent from the state. You know, Malden and Jenkins will come in when they do our audit and they don't necessarily give us a finding, but they'll give us a, a comment that says, hey, you know, you, you, you don't necessarily have to have a spending plan, but that's what we've tried to do with the leadership here is give you a plan to try to bring that down. And, and coupled with that, with the miller rate rollback, all that kind of, this year kind of went in hand in hand. But at this time of the year, where the, the taxes are normally due around November fifteenth in this, in this county and some years they've been extended, so the taxes aren't really coming into December or January. If we didn't have the cash flow that we have right now, we would be doing a tan, a tax anticipation note. And I don't know years preceding me if the Griffins Baller never had to do that, but I've had to do that other places where you have to borrow up to a maximum, uh, and then you have interest expense costs just to make your, uh, regular payables and payroll every month. So it is important during low tax revenue times that you have a healthy fund balance for, for that reason alone, to not incur additional expense. That helps a little bit.
Sir, thank, thank you for bringing that, that, that out because I, I failed to mention that exactly, uh, that, that scenario when someone was asking me about it, but, uh, I just wanted people to kind of, uh, understand what the fund balance is and what it was, uh, kind of created for, and you know the history of, of me calling it the C.A. Caria.
Heard that term a while. I'm getting well versed, take it a month, tell me about the Caria again one more time.
Yeah, so I, I, I just wanted to, uh, for those who may be listening, uh, uh, you know, to our, to our meeting, I wanted them to understand that we, we just don't have that money just sitting there, we looking all good and, and, uh, you, you know, it's money that we don't have to touch. Uh, but I wanted them to understand that, that point exactly what you made, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So we now have, uh, Mr. Holmes, we'll have to add him to the agenda, Zachary Holmes Business and Financial School. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Board members, in your information items in your packet include the, uh, incredible work done by Mr. Ballard, the construction renovation progress summary and the monthly facilities and maintenance report. Mr. Ballard, I just wanted to publicly say, thank you for everything you do for us, you and your office. I don't know how you do it, but you do a great job, just very thankful that you're in our organization. At this time, we'll have, uh, governance team comments, Mr. Mr. Holmes?
Uh, Chair, I, I wanted to, uh, just elaborate on what I asked Ms. Ray, and Ms. Ray don't normally do what I asked her to do, but she did it tonight. See, uh, I guess I don't get no potato chips, right? But I asked her to make, make, uh, each board member a copy of the, uh, twenty twenty-five COSPA, uh, uh, conference that was just recently held in DC and I was, uh, privileged to be able to attend. But, uh, I included some of the, uh, the Georgia federal issues for your, for your pleasure, uh, to see what was presented on the Hill. We actually got a chance to meet with, uh, Senator Raphael Warnock and, and, uh, we did get a chance to drop off information packages and we met with the staff of some of the other representatives, uh, and Senator Ossoff, representative, I mean, uh, staff. We met with them, but there are some, there are some, uh, crucial issues, uh, going on in, 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 uh, the education that people need to realize that we, my daughter works for Atlanta Public School System and they have laid off thousands of employees, they're looking at closing schools. And, uh, we have been very fortunate to, uh, not have to do that here. But, you know, there are some counties who are not in the position that we in and that fund balance that we just talked about is one of the reasons why we haven't had to resort to doing that. But I just want, I wanted to share with, uh, my board mates, what's going on through GSBA on a federal level because, uh, I think there was probably a couple hundred people from, uh, different states who took the time to walk the Hill and talk to representatives and their staff to let them know, uh, Georgia is concerned about what's going on in education. And, uh, and I just wanted to share that information with you, thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Holmes. Ms. Register? Alright, I don't have any comments either, I, I, okay, Dr. Warren, thank you.
Uh, good evening everyone, first of all, on iReady, thank you, uh, Ms. Plans that, as you receive that report from your son, it includes some, um, some work that a parent can do at home, teach them. I recall looking at a report, uh, with Ms. Phillips the other day in which a student, um, was recommended to read a lot to increase defluency. So it has, um, it's written in layman terms, number one, for parents to read and digest and to support their kids' learning at home. Um, recently we had our, um, uh, breaking ground on a new transportation facility, um, it's come along well. Um, it's downhill between Ours Elementary and our current transportation facility and we're anxious to get that opened up and hopefully have a ribbon cutting, um, sometime in the. Additionally, athletics, I've been able to go to several games, uh, football, softball and whatnot, I think cross country is going on as well. The kudos to, uh, Mr. Stikes, um, he applied for and received the grant from the Arthur Blank Foundation.
Oh wow.
We're going to start two sports in our, our middle school. Locker, additionally, we're going to start girls' flat, oh, first flat football game for girls in middle school will take place. will take place in the stadium on October twentieth. That's a Monday evening. And our female board members will actually service captains to a corn toss before each game.
I stepped back on that one. I let the women handle that one.
Yes sir, yes sir. They're gonna make history that night. And lastly, attendance is an issue for our district. We have more kids that are chronically absent, meaning they miss ten percent or more of the school days. And no learning can take place when the seats are empty. With that in mind, on last Thursday, myself, Dr. Ridley, Dr. Moore, Dr. McRory, Mr. Sutton, we met with our juvenile judges, Judge Ott and Judge Ashford, to begin some conversations on closing some gaps that exist so we can be more proactive with students and get the juvenile courts involved, as well as our adults. We need mom and dad to be responsible as much as possible to send their kids home, I'm sorry, send their kids to school so they can receive instruction. So, we're gonna tighten the news, so to speak, to increase our attendance.
Very good. That would be fun. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Warren. Any other comments from anyone? I do just wanna thank the people that are still here. Thank you for everything you do for our district every day. Thank you for those listening. Thank you to those who will watch this later. You all do a great job. Without you, none of us would be sitting in the room. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We do have, I believe, one item for executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. That's a lot. Alright, I need a motion, please, to go into executive session. Motion by Ms. Register? Second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Right, three-zero, we are in executive session.